Good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, January 13th, 2025, 1:30 PM. We are here for a work session with Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources. I'm Kristin Stevens, the new Chair of the Board. With me are my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally and Commissioner John Kofalas. We also have our County Manager, Lorinda Volker, here. We have a variety of people in the room who I'll introduce themselves when they are ready to speak. We have four items on the agenda. We are going to squeeze our Lead Engineer, Mark Peterson, in after our first item, which is about noxious weeds, so he can give a little update. I will turn it over to Leslie Ellis, our Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director, to direct the agenda this afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources. And as you mentioned, we had requested that we shift some things around a bit just for time's sake and so Mark can get back to his busy day. We're, I think, it feels like we're into the new year now where we have a lot going on with all the Departments and so fairly packed agendas. And today we have Natural Resources, Community Development and Engineering. And I think with no further ado, I'll turn it over to Casey and you can introduce your project and team and get going. And then we'll move to the other items. Thanks so much.
Megan Flanagan with Natural Resources. And I'll turn it over to Casey. We want to share with you about a relatively new noxious weed that is within Larimer County on a pretty limited scale and a recommendation about adding it to the Larimer County Noxious Weed List so that we'll talk a little bit about the benefits to doing that and an approach moving forward as far as a public hearing and your decision.
Great. Casey Cisneros, Land Stewardship Manager for Larimer County. And I'm here today to talk about staff recommendation to add Meadow Hawkweed to the Larimer County Noxious Weed List. Meadow Hawkweed was found in 2023 by a volunteer who is out monitoring conservation easements in the Estes Valley or around the Estes Valley. And they reported it to us. Most likely, it came in on heavy equipment or material that was imported to do roadwork after the 2013 flood. So currently Meadow Hawkweed is a watch list species, which is different than a state noxious weed. The Colorado Department of Agriculture designates watch list species as species that could potentially become problematic in Colorado. And they collect data through surveys, but there is no management that is mandated with the current rules. However, the Orange Hawkweed, the cousin of Meadow Hawkweed, is a List A noxious weed, which is the highest priority in Colorado. And it's found on 41 land parcels in Larimer County. We found an additional eight land parcels last year. And we've been working on it for about 10 years now. And it appears to be really invasive. And we expect the same out of Meadow Hawkweed. Meadow Hawkweed is currently found on only four parcels in Larimer County along Highway 7 in the Boulder County line. And it's a highly invasive perennial species that threatens biodiversity in a very ecologically rich part of the county next to Rocky Mountain National Park. Our staff is working towards eradicating this plant before it becomes more widely established. However, we need some additional tools. And that's why we're here today to ask for a noxious weed designation for this plant because the Noxious Weed Act affords local municipalities and counties to add any plants that they see locally threatening to their own noxious weed list or noxious weed management plan. This was an item that was brought forth to the Land Stewardship Advisory Board who formally made a motion to recommend the Board of County Commissioners add Meadow Hawkweed to the county noxious weed list. So this is a really helpful visual aid to recognize what happens the longer that a plant is invasive, an invasive plant is on the landscape. As time goes on, the control costs in the area that's infested, infected, infested goes up. And right now, we're at the very beginning of the bell curve where we can expend the least amount of resources to eradicate it from the county, which is what we would like to do. Management has been very effective on this plant. You can see on one of the parcels that our staff treated in 2023, it's all of that orange plant throughout the meadow. And in 2024, you can see that it's been nearly eliminated from that site. One of the issues that we're running into is that two out of the four landowners have not made any earnest effort in managing this plant and trying to eradicate it, even though we have offered them free services to do so. And so by making it a noxious weed in Larimer County, that gives us the opportunity to enforce the Noxious Weed Act and go through our local county management plan compliance process. So our recommendation is to hold a land use hearing on February 24th for public comment, followed by a B O C C vote to add Meadow Hawkweed to the Larimer County Noxious Weed List.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me just thank you, Casey, and team for your expertise and your hard work on this. And as it lays on to the Land Stewardship Advisory Board, I know we had some robust conversations. I think this is a really big concern. And I think if we tackle this early, we can eradicate it without having to use a lot of resources. And, you know, the chemicals or things that you have to, or how you do this, it's going to be a lot easier. It's like the ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And, you know, we can see what that would look like. I don't know if you could expand very concisely, just to help my colleagues know that other mountain, Rocky Mountain states to the north have had maybe, maybe weren't as, I don't know, how they, their plan was to tackle this, but how that spread throughout the entire state quickly. So I just didn't know if you could share that, that this is very, very, as you said, invasive and very aggressive weed.
Yeah. Being such a pretty plant, it's an escaped ornamental. Folks brought it into this region and planted it in their gardens, particularly along the Pacific Northwest in Montana, Idaho, and along the East Coast. It's become particularly invasive. And in Colorado, we have four parcels in Larimer County where it's currently present. And then there is one report in Jefferson County. And that's all the Meadow Hawkweed in the entire state. And so we have a very good opportunity to get rid of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kofalas, do you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So my first question, overarching question is, how do we reconcile eradicating these types of invasive species with any value that might be for pollinators? As an example, I offer, you know, I think we eradicate or do some control measures with Canadian thistle. And yet, Canadian thistle is actually a pretty important flower, you know, for certain species of pollinators. How do we reconcile that? How does that fit into this equation, Casey?
Yeah, it really depends on what kind of pollinators you're managing for. So these noxious weed species like Canada thistle are really good for non-native or generalist insects as a pollinator plant, or as a pollinating plant. So like European honeybees being one of them. So a lot of those generalists or non-native insects will use these plants. However, what happens is with the invasiveness of plants like Meadow Hawkweed, they push out more specialist species, native species that have connections with specialist pollinators.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Gosh, thanks. Thank you. Still trying to better understand whatever value, you know, maybe I'm playing a little bit of the devil's advocate, but we don't want to make it too easy for you all. But whatever value Canadian thistle, as one example, there's certain kinds of, as I understood it, Casey, generalist pollinators, whatever value they might bring to the biodiversity, if we are taking them out, aren't we undermining that? Or are there other species that are perhaps replacing where those, you know, where those birds or bees or insects might be pollinating?
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. So naturally, there would be a lot of native forbs and plants that support native pollinators in these same systems. But once a non-native, such aggressive plants such as Orange Hawkweed, Meadow Hawkweed invade some of these grasslands, they push out the native forbs. And so the unintended consequence, you might be supporting some pollinators with these plants.
And an approach moving forward as far as a public hearing and your decision.
Great. Casey Cisneros, Land Stewardship Manager for Larimer County. And I'm here today to talk about staff recommendation to add Meadow Hawkweed to the Larimer County Noxious Weed List. Meadow Hawkweed was found in 2023 by a volunteer who is out monitoring conservation easements in the Estes Valley, around the Estes Valley, and they reported it to us. Most likely, it came in on heavy equipment or material that was imported to do roadwork after the 2013 flood. So currently Meadow Hawkweed is a watch list species, which is different than a state noxious weed. The Colorado Department of Agriculture designates watch list species as species that could potentially become problematic in Colorado. And they collect data through surveys, but there is no management that is mandated with the current rules. However, the Orange Hawkweed, the cousin of Meadow Hawkweed, is a List A noxious weed, which is the highest priority in Colorado. And it's found on 41 land parcels in Larimer County. We found an additional eight land parcels last year, and we've been working on it for about 10 years now. And it appears to be really invasive, and we expect the same out of Meadow Hawkweed. Meadow Hawkweed is currently found on only four parcels in Larimer County, along Highway 7 in the Boulder County line. And it's a highly invasive perennial species that threatens biodiversity in a very ecologically rich part of the county, next to Rocky Mountain National Park. Our staff is working towards eradicating this plant before it becomes more widely established. However, we need some additional tools, and that's why we're here today to ask for a noxious weed designation for this plant, because the Noxious Weed Act affords local municipalities and counties to add any plants that they see locally threatening to their own noxious weed list or noxious weed management plan. This was an item that was brought forth to the Land Stewardship Advisory Board, who formally made a motion to recommend the Board of County Commissioners add Meadow Hawkweed to the county noxious weed list. So this is a really helpful visual aid to recognize what happens the longer that a plant is invasive, an invasive plant is on the landscape. As time goes on, the control costs in the area that's infested, infected, infested goes up. And right now, we're at the very beginning of the bell curve, where we can expend the least amount of resources to eradicate it from the county, which is what we would like to do. Management has been very effective on this plan. You can see on one of the parcels that our staff treated in 2023, it's all of that orange plant throughout the meadow. And in 2024, you can see that it's been nearly eliminated from that site. One of the issues that we're running into is that two out of the four landowners have not made any earnest effort in managing this plant and trying to eradicate it, even though we have offered them free services to do so. And so by making it a noxious weed in Larimer County, that gives us the opportunity to enforce the Noxious Weed Act and go through our local county management plan compliance process. So our recommendation is to hold a land use hearing on February 24th for public comment, followed by a B O C C vote to add Meadow Hawkweed to the Larimer County Noxious Weed List.
Commissioner Shannick McNally.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me just thank you, Casey, and team for your expertise and your hard work on this. And as lays on to the Land Stewardship Advisory Board, I know we had some robust conversations. I think this is a really big concern, and I think if we tackle this early, we can eradicate it without having to use a lot of resources. And, you know, the chemicals or things that you have to, or how you do this, it's going to be a lot easier. It's like the ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And, you know, we can see what that would look like. You should, I don't know if you could expand very concisely just to help my colleagues know that other mountain, north, mountains, Rocky Mountain states to the north have had maybe, maybe weren't as, I don't know, how they, how they, their plan was to tackle this, but how that spread throughout the entire state and quickly. So I just didn't know if you could share that, that this is very, very, as you said, invasive and very not, very aggressive weed.
Being such a pretty plant, it's an escaped ornamental. Folks brought it into this region and planted it in their gardens, particularly along the Pacific Northwest in Montana, Idaho, and along the East Coast. It's become particularly invasive. And in Colorado, we have four parcels in Larimer County where it's currently present. And then there is one report in Jefferson County. And that's all the Meadow Hawkweed in the entire state. And so we have a very good opportunity to get rid of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kavales, do you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I think I have a couple of questions. So my first question, overarching question is, how do we reconcile eradicating these types of invasive species with any value that might be for pollinators? As an example, I offer, you know, I think we eradicate or do some control measures with Canadian thistle. And yet, Canadian thistle is actually a pretty important flower, you know, for certain species of pollinators. So how do we, how do we reconcile that? How does that fit into this equation, Casey?
Yeah, it really depends on what kind of pollinators you're managing for. So these noxious weed species like Canada thistle are really good for non-native or generalist insects as a pollinator plant, or as a pollinating plant. So like European honeybees being one of them. So a lot of those generalists or non-native insects will use these plants. However, what happens is with the invasiveness of plants like Meadow Hawkweed, they push out more specialist species, native species that have connections with specialist pollinators.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Gosh, thanks. Thank you. Still trying to better understand whatever value, you know, maybe I'm playing a little bit of the devil's advocate, but we don't want to make it too easy for you all. But whatever value Canadian thistle, as one example, there's certain kinds of, as I understood it, Casey, generalist pollinators, whatever value they might bring to the biodiversity, if we are taking them out, aren't we undermining that? Or are there other species that are perhaps replacing where those, you know, where those birds or bees or insects might be pollinating?
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. So naturally, there would be a lot of native forbs and plants that support native pollinators in these same systems. But once a non-native, such aggressive plants such as Orange Hawkweed, Meadow Hawkweed invade some of these grasslands, they push out the native forbs. And so the unintended consequence, you might be supporting some pollinators with these plants. But once we eradicate them, native forbs will be there to fill that same niche, just as those native pollinators adapted with those native plant species.
Thank you. Just, just two more questions and I'll stop. Thanks. I believe that makes sense. And I think you've answered the question when the term threatening biodiversity and you showed the comparison, one field with all the pretty flowers and the other one with the monocots, the grasses. I mean, so they're, they're crowding out natural, naturally occurring native species of grasses, and, and those produce flowers and pollinators can access that. Is that what they're crowding out? Or are they crowding out other species of plants? Is it just the grasses? And is that grassland used for ranges? Are animals on that grassland? Maybe you could.
Yeah, looking back at that photo, it just, I haven't been to that site, but it looks like a pasture that somebody probably hated at one point. So it's a lot of planted grasses. But in context of the landscape, you are right next to Rocky Mountain National Park, National Forest Land, and county open spaces, where a lot of, the goal of managing those lands is for biodiversity. And so it's easy for those plants to move from like a hay pasture in the wind, across the street, onto National Forest Land and just continue to crowd out the other species. It looks like a dandelion when it's first growing, but it creates a mat on the ground. So you can see how it takes a lot of resources away from other plants.
Thank you, Casey. And I appreciate that you proactively answered another question that I don't need to ask about. Where, where did these Hawkweeds come from? The Meadow Hawkweed from Northwest, et cetera. My last question is, you mentioned that that the State Noxious Weed Act allows the locals to add species, and then it gives us tools. Does that mean the property owners that are not at this point cooperating? What, does that mean we would spray the Hawkweed without? How does that work?
No, so currently in the Larimer County Noxious Weed Management Plan, we outline what our compliance process is for landowners who do not address their noxious weed issues. And so it, it's a lot of outreach. We send out letters and we, we offer services to help them. In this case, we would give free services to go out there and actually take care of it. However, if, if the landowner is ultimately non-compliant, doesn't do anything, then we can request a right of entry to go in and manage the weeds itself. And this last year, the state legislature also added to the Noxious Weed Act, affording us the opportunity to write citations to landowners if we want to.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Casey. Thanks for explaining the situation. I don't really have any, I guess the only question is, is it not considered a Colorado invasive species or noxious weed because there's been so few sightings of it in Colorado?
Yeah, and Colorado's a little bit behind other states in the, in the region where they have these scientific matrices which they rate plants to decide whether they should be a noxious species in, in, and around, in, in that area. And Colorado actually has just finished their first plant assessment form to decide and be able to score these plants, to decide if they should be noxious weeds. I filled out one of the plant assessment forms for Meadow Hawkweed in preparation for this work session, and it scored really, really high. So like a 42 would be a perfect noxious weed score, and this was a 39. So there's a lot of potential threats with this species.
Thank you. That's great. So hard to see if the light's on. Well, thank you. Thanks for explaining that. That's, it sounds like the state might want to pay attention, and I'm glad we're kind of at the forefront of trying to address this. So I, I'm supportive of, you know, the staff recommendation of going forward with the hearing because, you know, that piece is important. I think a lot of people don't understand this issue yet. And then having that vote, so. And I assume my colleagues are?
Yes, with a question of what outreach will occur, who will be contacted prior to the federal attorney board proposed here?
Yeah, based on the noxious weed law, we're going to be posting notice in the newspaper 30 days prior to the land use hearing.
But with something like this, we don't necessarily, the land use matters, but we targeted outreach. Somehow postcards have been a certain radius, you know, et cetera. Will we not be that? That's not what we normally do.
I, I wasn't planning on that, no. This is, this is the direction I got from the county attorney's office. It was.
Or watch this really informative work session. That's fine. Well, and I think, will you add that? I mean, will it be something that's added to the website? Is there a website that kind of, where people can keep track of things and we can refer people there as well, too?
Yeah, we can definitely do that as well. Provide some background information.
Great, thank you. Maybe we could even do a social media thing. I mean, that, that would be maybe easier, and then there might be more people interested beyond the people that are on, on that road. We'll think about that. Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right. Is there anything else that you had for us, Casey?
That's it for today.
Wonderful. So Leslie, it sounds like we'll move on to our senior engineer, Mark Peterson, who has a few updates for us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Casey.
And Mark just has a couple of quick announcements. Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Peterson, county engineer. What I'm here to bring before you, and this is probably old news, news to you in some respects. We were fortunate enough to get a quote from Commissioner Stevens in the Colorado article that was online today. But, you know, after three attempts, Larimer County was able to be awarded a RACE grant, Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, grant from the Department of Transportation. It is covering Country Club Road, the two-mile segment between State Highway 1 and Turnberry. And it's going to allow us to take the next steps on that corridor. We went through a, as you'll probably recall, we went through a pretty extensive public outreach process and took public input and developed a corridor improvement plan along that corridor. This will allow us to take it to the next steps to do the design work. Total estimated project costs are 1.45 million. The grant is for $1.16 million. So, and it is 2025 fiscal year money. So we'll now go through the process of working with the Department of Transportation. It's the Federal Highway Administration that awards the grant to us. So we'll have to go through the process of getting the grant awarded and then obligate the money and proceed to design. That will take a number of months, I would expect. But just, you know, wanted to bring that to your attention or noted for the public's information as well. And then the other thing that is going to be on your agenda for tomorrow morning at Admin Matters, and it's a consent item. And I should have mentioned this to Leslie because I know she informed you of the letter of support that you're going to be signing for the city of Loveland on a protect grant. But the town of Windsor is submitting a RACE grant application. This is their third submittal. You've provided two prior letters of support. It's for the State Highway 392 corridor. So it's essentially asking you to sign a letter of support. It's the third letter. It's identical to what you've provided in the past. So it's going to be in your consent packet.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mark? Commissioner Kavales, please.
Yes, sir. Yeah, nice to see you.
I have two questions, and they are. The first one regarding the, the RACE grant and 1.45 million or so that's dedicated to planning and design for the stretches of Country Club Road, 50E, County Road 50E. How do we, so what happens to, once we design it and plan it, we still need to get money to build, to do it?
Correct. So we will potentially have the opportunity to, to apply for implementation funding under a subsequent RACE proposal, or there might be other Safe Streets and Roads for All, may still have money. This, this kind of project would qualify for that. And then we'll have to see, you know, what funding sources we can develop internally in our capital projects program to carry it forward. But it was, it's over $10 million to do all the improvements along that corridor.
How much?
Over 10 million. And I would expect that cost has gone up since we did the corridor study, so.
Great. My second question, please. Can you clarify, Mark? When we received the information about the grant, the RACE grant, from, it seemed like there were two RACE grants. One referenced 50E in relation, unless I read it wrong. There were, there was one that came out of the congressman's office and one that came out of the senator's office. And one was clearly what we just described. And one seemed to suggest raised dollars going for 50E in Bingham Hill Road area. And how does this also align with the CDOC grant that we got to do some of the improvements on, on Bingham Hill Road, some of the shoulder work?
So I don't know exactly where that reference to Bingham Hill Road came from a, from a grant application standpoint or a grant, or RACE grant award standpoint. Kennedy Road 50E is both Bingham Hill and Country Club Road. So I, I'm surmising that somebody went looking for Kennedy Road 50E and picked up on it being Bingham Hill. So there is no grant that has ever been submitted for Bingham Hill. There is Highway Safety Improvement Program or HCP money that will allow us to do a climbing lane, but only on that first stretch immediately west of Overland Trail.
Thank you for clarifying. I, I suspected there might have been some inaccuracy in those communications. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shannick McNally, any questions? Yeah, so we did have HCP money that also went to a different portion of 50E on Bingham Hill Road, but that wasn't a, that wasn't a grant award. I mean, it was an award of dollars, but it wasn't something we applied for. So, Mark, I just want to thank you for the good news because I know that you've tried a few times, and I appreciate that we did that. Sometimes the third time is the charm, and in this case it was. So that's good news, and we hope it is for Windsor as well as they, they attempt their third time. So there's a lot of competition for these dollars. And so, but it's great to have some of those dollars come in. And then we will obviously look for implementation dollars. The Non-Atainment Area Air Pollution Mitigation Enterprise could be some funding for at least the pedestrian improvements and the bike improvements along there. So that's, that's another pot of money we could, we could look. But, but $10 million is a lot of money. So we will, we will, we will try to figure out how to patch that together. But I appreciate this. This is, this really is good news. And it was such good news that I had at least two people from that area say, when is it going to happen? And I said, well, I mean, this is just the, the design phase, and so it, it will be a while. But, but they, they were happy that progress was being made, so.
And I would like to give credit to Eric Tracy and Matt Johnson and Rusty McDaniel, who all worked on, you know, preparing the grant application and fine tuning it for resubmission and the like, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that, I think we had some help from the Department of Transportation, too. And as, as we, you know, kind of look for ways to make it, you know, shine more. I don't know if that's the right term. But, I mean, you're right, you're trying to catch someone's attention. And, and sometimes these really important projects, they're just not as flashy and sexy as some others. And so we, I'm glad we were able to make the case that this is really important for the people in the community who live there and for safety reasons, so. Good, good work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Leslie. Yeah, and thank you for recognizing the good work of staff and the challenge of going after these grants and winning these grants. So thank you, Mark. We appreciate it. We'll turn it over to Rebecca now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. And I'm here to talk about updates to the bylaws for our Planning Advisory Committees. So the county has three appointed committees to represent and provide a conduit for the commissioners to interact with community members in three geographic areas, the Red Feather Lakes Community, the La Porte Community, and the Estes Valley. So these three Planning Advisory Committees came into being at different times and all had purpose statements that were roughly similar, but weren't exactly aligned with one another. And so as we have worked to update the bylaws for all of our boards and commissions to align with the new county policy for all, all boards and commissions, we're working to standardize the purpose statements for these three Planning Advisory Committees specifically. So we worked with you all last year to revise the purpose statements in a way that reflects the Board of County Commissioners expectations for those three boards. And we have since taken the proposed bylaw revisions and draft purpose statements to each of those committees for their feedback. And so today, I'm presenting you with some changes that were, that are recommended by staff in response to some of the feedback that we heard from the Planning Advisory Committees to see if you're comfortable with some of the proposed changes. So in your, your packet in front of you, and I can pull it up on screen as well, are the purpose statements for all three of the committees. So you can see the exact language. The, the language is essentially the same for all three, but with different references to the geographic areas, the names of, you know, whether it's La Porte, Red Feather, or, or Estes, or which adopted plan might be applicable in that area. So I will pull this up on screen and just walk through some of the proposed changes that staff is recommending. Make sure that's visible up there. Okay, so everything that is highlighted in yellow is a proposed addition. Anything that's in red, strike out as a proposed deletion. So the statement, the paragraph at the top states the overall general purpose and intent of the committees. There was a suggestion from one of the committees to specifically reference that those committees are involved in reviewing both quasi judicial and legislative items, while making it clear that they do not make any decisions, that the decision-making authority still rests with the Board of County Commissioners, but that they may be reviewing development applications as a key part of their function. The next change in letter A really emphasizes, emphasizes the two-way communication role of these committees. So the suggestion, I believe this one was, this change was suggested by the Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee, but really makes sense for all, all three of the committees. And the recommendation was, in addition to soliciting community input and comment on things, to then communicate that back to the Board of County Commissioners. So that seems to, in staff's mind, reflect your intent for that, that purpose. There was feedback on language being confusing in bullet points C and D. In both of those places, we had written, as requested and approved by the Board of County Commissioners, here are some things these committees can be working on. The suggestion from EV PAC was to remove the "and approved" language because they felt like it was more, just more clearly stated as, as requested, so that it, it's not implying that there's an approval process necessarily for items. So that's a suggestion. And then finally, there was this recommendation to add a note about the annual work plan and that they have a role in recommending a work plan for themselves, subject to approval by the Board of County Commissioners. So those were the universal changes that were proposed to all three of the Planning Advisory Committees. Advisory Committees. I wanted to also draw attention to some, some questions or feedback from the La Porte Area Planning Advisory Committee that may warrant additional conversation. So, the, the Lay PAC noted that the purpose statement now includes business owners as potential committee members, and this is true for all three of those Planning Advisory Committees, and so there was a request for, uh, direction or clarification, um, that came from Lay PAC about whether that is the intent of the Board of County Commissioners to include, um, residents, property owners, and, and/or business owners on any of these committees, and if so, if there's a limit to the number of business owners that you might want to see on one of these committees, is it one, or two, or three, or, or some, some other number, if that is something, a type of representation you'd like to see within these committees. So, that's one question we have for you today. The second, um, is more of a request for clarification. In bullet point D, in that purpose statement, facilitate communication between the La Port Community Members and the Laramie County Government. Lay PAC requested some additional direction on how and when they should be facilitating communication, and had some, um, confusion over exactly what is expected of them and their, their role in getting that type of input from the community. So, that, that's the, the feedback that we've received from the three Planning Advisory Committees and the proposed changes from staff, and then a couple, a couple of questions for you all.
Looks like Commissioner Shadak McNally would like to make the first comments.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Rebecca, thanks for your work on this, and, um, appreciate, um, the clarifications. Also, I think in the bylaws for the Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee, when I make those appointments, there is a limitation to how many can live with, that are not, that live in unincorporated versus incorporated, inside city limits versus unincorporated. I don't know if that's similar, I mean, it's kind of hard for Red Feather, but I, I know that's kind of special, because we do, um, count that, when I count that, so I know that I don't have, it, it's easy to have a lot of folks who live inside the town and not in the unincorporated, so, um, I hope that's still there, because I think that's an important piece. Um, and then my, my next comment, Madam Chair, is, um, I think, um, I could see, uh, including all voices, um, and I could, um, wondering, you know, it's kind of discretion of the Board of County Commissioners, too, it might be hard to find, um, business owners or not business owners, you know, sometimes, um, you know, just trying to, I, I have tried to recruit, um, um, younger folks and people who do own business, it's been hard to sometimes get that with Estes Valley, because there are a lot of retirees, so, um, you know, I think that also, I, I don't want it to be where it's saying, oh, you have to have this many business owners, and we leave seats open, when we could have a very valuable retiree who has a lot of planning experience, um, like we've had in Estes Park, and someone who, you know, retired and moved up there, but had, you know, a planning role, and it would provide some nice new perspective, so, I, I just wanted to caution that, and I don't want to take away kind of the discretionary role of the Commissioners, so, those are, those are my two questions or comments, so, thanks.
Great. Thank you. Um, and to respond to your question about the composition of Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee in town versus county residents, that remains unchanged in the bylaws, that is something that is unique to that Planning Advisory Committee, um, that there's, can be no more than two committee members who are, live within town limits, and so that, we're not proposing any changes to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Rebecca. Commissioner Kavales.
Thank you. Thanks, Rebecca. A couple of comments, questions. One is on the matter of the Lay PAC and the questions about business owners. I would think it's logical to try to be consistent with this particular statement, that business owners, you know, can be connected to the community, and so, I think that we would keep it as it is in the other two PACs, that is my opinion, and if there are concerns about, um, you know, perhaps overrepresentation from business owners that may be far removed from the community, I mean, that would come out in an interview, and we don't ultimately have to approve that person. So, that, I think that's one way of addressing that concern. And a question related to what I just said, Rebecca and colleagues, and that is, what are the, how many people are on the Estes Valley PAC, RFL PAC, and Lay PAC? Because I think Lay PAC has the smallest number, because we were having a hard time getting a quorum. Uh, I, I think it's important to know that.
Yes, um, and I don't want to
Okay.
Speak incorrectly, so if you'll give me a moment to just pull, pull up the pages for, the webpages for those boards, to be, to be sure. The Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee, um, is
Nine or seven?
Seven members, and let me just check the other two. I know that Red Feather has quite a few more, but let me get to La Porte.
Has five?
The La Porte Area Advisory Committee is also seven members. We have a couple vacancies currently, but that one is also seven members. And then, Red Feather is unique, so this, this is, this is an open question, too, that that may be good for this conversation as well, is, should all three of these committees have the same number of members? Red Feather Lakes is a minimum of nine members, um, and so, that one, the bylaws for that, that committee are written differently, that there's a minimum number of members, and if you recall, last year, we, we had to bring a resolution to you all, um, at an Admin Matters meeting, because we dropped below the, that minimum number of nine, and we needed to suspend that provision of the bylaws temporarily, um, which was a difficult position to be in, because we, we weren't in a position to recruit at that time, but we did drop below that minimum of nine members. So, that, that, that's an open question, too, is should those three committees have the same number of members?
Is, is there a maximum in the bylaws? It just says minimum? I think you're right.
Double checking.
And, and while you're checking, my, my reaction to your question and my response is, maybe, again, there, there, it ought to be consistent, um, and I don't know what my colleagues think, but
Yeah, the
Maybe seven is a good number for these PACs.
Yeah, the Red Feather Lake bylaws stay, state a minimum of nine members and a maximum of 13 members,
Okay.
Which is much larger than most of our boards and commissions.
We've had difficulty trying to come up with nine or nine plus.
Yes.
I don't know what you all think.
Um, Commissioner Shadak McNally has some thoughts, I think.
Yeah, and I, thanks for the question. Um, if you look at population and, and things, you know, I feel like nine versus, you know, Estes, Estes Valley, it, it feels a little lopsided, because there's not as many folks maybe living in that area as in Estes Valley, and Estes Valley has 4.5 million people driving through it every year, so, I think that, I, I do see some value in having maybe that, look at that number coming down. Also, I think it's, it's, um, thinking about, um, staff and interviews and appointments, it adds a little bit more, I think, to staff capacity to have to manage more folks, um, and, and also for interviews. So, I, I do wonder if, if we should bring those back in alignment, um, but I also think, you know, looking at populations and amount of work, um, between, between the different PACs, one, I know Estes Valley certainly has had a lot more workload and, and things over the last few years since I came on board, because we did a comprehensive plan and things, so, I just want to kind of look at it from that lens as well, as maybe, um, hard to, they're not like the same, they're not all apples, they're, they're kind of all fruit, but different size of fruit, so I just, I don't want to make sure, it, I don't know if you can apply, this is great to have this common language, but, um, I, I certainly think nine is, seems like a very large group for a smaller population and workload. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, it sounds like there's agreement on having that consistency of seven, uh, across the board, and that makes sense to all of us, and then we won't have that provision that prevents them from doing work. Commissioner Kavales.
Very quickly, and then we should get to that other shaded area on the Lay PAC one. How many folks are on the, uh, currently, the current membership of the RFL PAC? Is it seven? Is it, because if, if we, if we change the bylaws to go down to seven, I think we're in agreement, does that mean that somebody would have to get bumped, or that might be, uh, proactive? In other words, next time?
Yeah, it, it could be a, a matter of
Take effect when
You know, phasing, phasing it out, or kind of working down, I'm sorry, my cursor's lost.
Because we just approved Ryan for PAC, but phasing it in perhaps might, if we're above seven?
It appears that we have
Twenty-one.
With the, with the new, new appointment would be eight members on there, so, assuming, assuming that our, our webpage is up to date. There are one, two, three, four, five terms that would expire at the end of this year, 2025, so there would be an opportunity moving into 2026 to recalibrate.
So, that's how we can handle that?
Mm-hmm.
And I believe the Chair is right, and Commissioner Shadak McNally, there's agreement on trying to be consistent and taking into consideration population and all that stuff.
Okay.
Should we talk about the next one?
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, would you
Well, I, I wonder if you can offer any more clarification on, you know, it, it, the, it wasn't clear to me what, what kinds of, um, expectations they're, they're hoping for. It does tie it into, the communication needs to be tied into the La Porte subarea, the La Porte area plan, and then it says vision goals and policies. Uh, that's kind of broad. Do you have a sense, Rebecca, what folks are asking for there? Or what, would you have recommendations, perhaps?
Well, I, well, I'll start with, my recommendation would be, this, these bylaws and these purpose statements are intended to have staying power and be able to respond to projects or needs or issues that may come up over a long period of time in these communities, so I think my recommendation would be to keep the language as is, because I think it's broad enough to allow the, the board to decide kind of when and how you may want feedback. Um, but the input that we received from Lay PAC may reflect a desire from that group right now to get a better understanding of, um, whether there's an expectation for them to be going out and doing any outreach conversations, or, um, if they are hearing things from their community members, how should they be updating the rest of the committee, or updating the, their commissioner liaison? Um, so, I, I think it may relate to some of the, um, conversations we've been having with that committee in general about what is their, what are they focused on in the next year or two, what, where, where there is interest, and their desire to focus on some topics that may be out of scope for a Planning Advisory Committee.
So, based on your comments, uh, I'll, for an example, so one of the things that there was some confusion about is the discussions around the, the proposed school consolidation and cash Laputa schools and all of that, and folks were engaged in that, and they thought maybe that's something proper, you know, for RFL PAC to be involved in, although I think we've agreed that's outside the scope, but reading the, if, if we say vision goals and policies of the subarea plan, could it be misconstrued that, that kind of engagement is allowed, or, because I haven't looked at the subarea plan, I don't know if it gets into education or those kinds of things. Any thoughts there, Rebecca? If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think it's hard to
Okay.
Think through every possible topic that could come up, or issue that could come up, and I think it's probably normal or natural that if there's a, a big community conversation happening around something like schools, um, that, that's going to be a topic that they may want to bring to a meeting or ask about, and then there needs to be a dialogue of, okay, is this, is this the right venue for that type of conversation or not? Um, and I think it's okay for them to flag those issues as they're hearing them. It may not be that the Lay PAC group is the right group to address it, but it still may be important for you as a Commissioner to know and, and share with your colleagues, um, to see if there's a, a conversation that's more appropriate for another group to have or in another meeting you may be a part of.
Thank you. Based on that, I would support our Community Development Director's recommendation that for this item D, you know, we keep that language the way it is, and I think maybe the next time we meet, we need to bring up about the matrix and what you just shared, Rebecca, that if there's another topic, to bring it to the group, and that the group will decide, you know, is that an appropriate thing based on these parameters? Do you think that is how it could, it could work?
Yes, and I think the Commissioner liaisons, um, have a role, too, in helping to determine whether this is a topic that fits within that scope, if it's a topic that would really benefit from conversation with the rest of the Board of County Commissioners, or with a different department, and, so I think there's direction or guidance that happens through that role as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
I just want to thank Rebecca and team for, commend them for, um, tackling this and wading through this, because there's a lot of history and context, and three different areas and groups, and a lot of very passionate committee members who love their communities, and I just want to thank you for engaging on this, and appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and, you know, we know that, um, with boards and commissions, folks are excited about the work, and they're passionate about the work, and so, um, sometimes things come forward that we don't want advisement on, or we, you know, and it, it, it doesn't mean that we don't want to hear those voices, but we don't have to act or, um, move on things that are recommended, so, um, and, you know, not being a liaison to any of these three advisory committees, you know, I, you know, I, I know that it can be challenging to, to make sure that we're, we're getting the input that we need, but, um, hopefully, Commissioner Kavales, you can work with this group on, on, on how, how to make that happen. Um, the one thing I would say is, I, I don't, um, I think we should keep business owners in for the, for the first paragraph, and I don't think we should necessarily limit that. I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Shadak McNally when she said, you know, um, there should be some flexibility and some, the liaison can make some of those decisions around, you know, what the makeup of that board looks like, uh, but I certainly don't want to say we're going to only have two members of this group and two members of that group, because I think that's hard to achieve, and also, um, I don't, I think all those voices are valuable on a board, and so, um, I think that the, the liaisons can help manage that and what that looks like, so. So, I, I think, I guess it seems, seems like everyone is fine with the language that's been proposed, so I think we can move forward with that.
Thank you very much, and I, I will just, in closing, reiterate, um, points that you all have made, that these boards are, these committees are very valuable, they, they do play a role, um, we're not, this, these changes in the bylaws are not an attempt to significantly change or minimize the role and the value that these committees play, it's just an attempt to standardize and make it really clear, so that everyone's on the same page.
Well, thank you, and then I guess we'll move on to item three, which is Community Development Director update.
Yes, thank you. A couple updates for you today. First, uh, an exciting, good news item for us. Um, we, this past year, 2024, worked to bring on a new vendor for processing our special event permits, um, and facilitating better interactions with our special event organizers, our staff reviewers, and reviewing agencies that are involved in that process, and members of the public, and tomorrow morning, we will go live with our new system. Um, it's ready to launch just in time for the 2024 special event season, so, starting at 7:00 AM tomorrow morning, event organizers will be able to submit applications for the 2024 season, um, and then we'll work to start getting those reviewed and scheduled and, um, coordinate with all the, the agencies, so, um, it's one in a series of steps that we've been working on to improve the, um, quality and efficiency of that process. Um, we have a major item proposed for our work plan for this year, which is to then tackle the code requirements related to special events, and so that would be the next phase of work related to special events, but, um, we're hitting a pretty major milestone tomorrow, and everything has been going very smoothly. And I want to o, offer some kudos to Denise Royball in our, um, department, who has been leading the charge and has been, um, putting in a lot of hours to make that project go smoothly, and then our, uh, project management team within the IT department, who has facilitated that and made it a very painless process for us, so, that's exciting.
Great. Any, did you have a question, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Comment is to, I'm sure you'll know to do this, but please express our gratitude to Denise and the team and the IT folks. Well done, it's great. My question is, related to the, um, the Community Development Work Plan, did we ever finalize that?
No, that's the other update that I have on my list for today. Thanks for that segue.
Curious.
Um, we, just with scheduling of work session items, we'd hope to get that back in front of you sooner, but we will be bringing that to your of you sooner, but we will be bringing that to your next SIPR work session, which isn't until two weeks from now because of the holiday next week, so January 27th, we will be bringing that work plan back to you. I will be sending a revised, updated Community Development Work Plan that's organized a little bit differently to better support that conversation and to reflect some of the feedback we heard from you back in December. So you will see that at your next work session, and you should sometime this week receive that revised work plan for me, from me.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really excited to hear about this tool and that you're getting ready to launch this. There's been a lot of collaboration and work and I, along this, this area, and I know this has been something that has grown in challenges, and I know there's cross-sectional with agencies, with referral agencies, and with the Sheriff's Department and others. So I want to commend you again for really bringing everyone together to kind of try to find, you know, the common pressure points and tension points, and then trying to look how we streamline it, make it, you know, important for us, trying to manage all of this, because it has kind of, in my opinion, exploded over the last few years. I, I, I'm really excited to hear about the launch and things. I don't know whether we could ask for an update after you kind of get through this initial phase and, and see, you know, is there increased feedback? Is there increased applicants? Is there feedback? How did it go for staff? How did it go for referral agencies? Just, I, I know you have a lot, but even if it's just a very high-level update and how it all, you know, how it kind of launched, I'd be very curious. And then also, towards the end of the season, you know, a little bit less than a year from now, I'd like to see, did this help? And how, what do we learn? And going, I know, I figure you will, but I am very curious to see if this helps us manage. And then also, I'm curious, with this tool of managing it, is there also a compliance tracking tool as well, as a part of this? And I'm just curious about that.
Yes, so the new system eapproval does have additional functionality that we have not had access to before, including the ability to document any issues that might arise or noncompliance with permit conditions, or any important notes that can carry on into future years for those recurring events, or to, to add notes specific to a property or parcel, so we can track how many events are happening on that property. So that ability to track and document in support of compliance will be easier with the new system.
Great news, thank you.
Quick, quick one.
Okay, quick one, because we're five minutes. Okay.
And, and if we can't answer it, I, it caused me to think the previous conversation, will we also be able to determine, as part of our evaluation of this new system, how we have made it more customer-friendly and streamlined the process for the folks that we serve?
Yes, the hope is that it will be much more customer-friendly, so I think when we reflect back and share, share updates, I think we can certainly come back to a work session in the future and just share some of those lessons learned, including any, any comments that we've directly received from many of our applicants. We did, prior to the launch tomorrow, we did recruit a couple of our special event organizers to run through the application themselves, to help us test it out, to provide feedback along the way, to tell us if anything was confusing or redundant. And so that was a really help, that user testing was a really helpful way to make sure the system was hopefully designed to meet the needs of not only our experienced applicants, but our brand-new applicants.
Thank you. Anything else for today, Rebecca?
The last thing is, I just wanted to acknowledge that last week we talked about the hearing procedures, and we've received some additional questions and feedback on those, and so I think we'll need to evaluate the best way to finalize that document, whether we needed an additional work session conversation or individual conversations to really get that document finalized, so we can get it up online and out to the people who are interested.
Great, thank you. All right, on to Leslie.
Yes, thank you. And I mostly ceded my time to Mark earlier for, for his announcements and just want to reflect and build on some of your comments about the new software system too. It is, I think, a great example of a project that was done across multiple departments or Visitor Services Team and Natural Resources. It's very excited to see that come online, as well as engineering and the folks who look at road events, and they all worked very hard together with the leadership of Community Development to get that done, the Sheriff's Office and many. So thank you for acknowledging that, and I just want to also express gratitude to the team that worked on that and has worked with our customers too, to make sure it will roll out successfully, so. And I'll end with that positive note.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you, thank you both for the updates, we appreciate that. We will look forward to talking about the work plan in the future meetings and the land use planning document that will describe how hearings are held, so people have that, and we have that as well. So that's great, and it is 2:28, we're, we're adjourning two minutes early. Thanks, everyone.